Workshop meeting for Wednesday, June 11, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Are we taking up the approval of the minutes in our next meeting? Is there any discussion about the minutes? Hearing none, executive session is held between meetings, Mr. Haggerty.
On Tuesday, June 10th, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding tax assessment, collective bargaining, personnel matters, contracting authority, the purchase or release of real property, and active or pending litigation.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, we will now open our first part for public participation on agenda items only. Is there anyone for public participation on agenda items only? Just a reminder, it's a three-minute cap, and we have, we are live streaming. Seeing none, we'll move on to our guests. We have Central Pennsylvania Food Bank presentation today from Zach Zuck. Come on up, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you again.
See you too. I think I'm waiting for the slide deck.
Slides will be up in a moment, and we'll...
All right, thank you so much for having me. My name is Zach Zuck, I'm the Vice President and Director of Impact and Policy at the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. All right, so this morning, I'm just going to talk really briefly about one, one small subset of the Dolphin County Hunger Mapping Project that was recently completed and published in February 2025 this year. As part of that, we also utilize publicly available USDA data on food deserts and analyze that for Dolphin County and have some results to share as well. First of all, just wanted to level set with food insecurity in Dolphin County. We did just recently get new data from Feeding America last month that showed that food insecurity increased again in, in 2023 relative to 2022, which is the data that we use to publish our Dolphin County Hunger Mapping Report. Food insecurity affects people in every single municipality across Dolphin County, but the overall food insecurity rate is 13%. For children, it's 20.2% with the new data, and the differential between adults and children is about 120%. So that's one of the most significant differentials between child and adult food insecurity that we see in the state. And just noting that food insecurity rates, while they're elevated in every single census tract municipality across Dolphin County, they're the most severe. In Harrisburg, with some neighborhoods having food insecurity rates above 20%. One census tract in particular has a food insecurity rate above 35%. Just turning to the map here, it's small, but we can make these slides available as well. Food insecurity rates, you can see areas of elevated food insecurity rates of 15% or more are the dark blue. And areas with hashing include mostly Harrisburg City with food insecurity rate of 20% or more. Turning to the food desert details and something that came out of the report, just very specifically, we looked at USDA measures of food deserts, and you can see the definitions here. There's two measures that we looked at. One was low income, low access at one mile and 10 miles. The definition from the USDA there is that folks are 33% of the census tract households are further than one mile from the nearest grocery store. In rural areas, that's 10 miles. The definition also includes that folks have to have a poverty rate of at least 20% or more. We combined that definition with low income, low access at a half and 20 miles, along with low vehicle access. So census tract had to have more than 100 households without vehicle access. Combining these two means creates the most severe definition of food, of a food desert available by the USDA, which is both low access at one mile and low vehicle access. So more than 100 households without a vehicle, making it harder to get to a grocery store. So the results that you can, can read about in our hunger mapping study show that Dolphin County has five of the most severe food deserts within our service territory, which covers 27 counties, basically a third of the state. And they're very concentrated around the Steelton, High Spire, lower southern Harrisburg area of, of Dolphin County. These particular census tracts are on this map here. They're the dark purple hatching of food deserts. You can see food deserts exist across Harrisburg City, but again, they're most severe in, in and around Steelton area. These census tracts contain more than 23,000 people, including nearly 5,000 folks who are food insecure, and they have low access to a grocery store. So some potential solutions, and again, this is just utilizing publicly available data from the USDA to come up with this analysis. But in this, this data really does show evidence of just the severity of food deserts in southern Harrisburg and Steelton. We use the term SNAP retailer, but that's really just to say a large grocery store or supermarket could be a solution, but also transportation or delivery services for folks in these areas. And really well-placed grocery store could have the potential to eliminate five severe food deserts at once. So it could be a potential, a potential very high ROI on, on any investments in that area. So that's just a very brief presentation on the, the results of this publicly available USDA data in our hunger mapping study. Happy to take any questions.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for your work. Zach, I know that as a part of our federal dollars that we had received, ARPA monies, we believe that our hunger mapping process and the coordination of our food services are more critical now than ever. With potentially $300 billion potentially being cut out of SNAP till 2038 is, is not going to make this better. It's going to present even more severe challenges to those who are struggling with the issues of hunger and, and access to, to food, which makes it even more critical that we don't duplicate services, that we figure out a way to coordinate the, the delivery. And then many times, we've seen sort of multiple competing interests that are trying to get engaged for, and, and I think our coordination and collaboration is critical, and I think that's a part of the, the recommendations. I also want to thank the many volunteers, food banks, and individuals who staff these opportunities around this county on a day-to-day basis. If it was not for their engagement, involvement, and their passion to serve this community, there's so many individuals in this county that would be going hungry.
Yeah.
We know this continues to be a significant issue, and we're committed to collaborating in ways that allow for us to come up with solutions from the ground. I suspect that concerns will only flow downhill, so it's up to us to be more resourceful, more creative, and more direct in our ability to deliver these solutions. More, more critical now than ever, and I think the investment in this mapping really gives us targeted opportunities and ways that you made recommendations to collaborate. The Steelton Food Desert, huh, I've got more experience with that than most. I remember trying to visit literally multiple grocery stores. The challenge with Steelton is because it's next to a river, they take, if you draw a five-mile circle around your area to do a market analysis, that river cuts off two and a half miles. And even if you look outwardly in the five miles, the census tracts and the, the socioeconomic data is not supportive for them to make that kind of retail decision, but it still remains a need. So I will make the plug here publicly. We are interested in this county and this region for any grocery store chain or any retailer that would be willing to serve this critical food desert. And, and the ability to, to try to lure and to work with or incentivize a grocery store to come into that critical area should remain a county priority. Should work with local municipalities in order to try to, to meet that future.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and we, and we know this data is, is nothing new and not, and not surprising, but hopefully it helps contextualize it in, in relation to other census tracts as well.
Thank you, Zach. Good morning. That was an excellent presentation. I echo Commissioner Hart's comments. Also, just want to add that this year, Commissioner supported additional funding to NutraPACs and COCO PACs and some other insecurity organizations throughout the county. Those are certain areas we can help in. We gave more than what was recommended, so I want to thank my colleagues for the support of that. You mentioned return on investment. Commissioner Harwick mentioned some grocery stores. Have you heard from any that might be interested in coming into the area?
We have not, and, and we, we view kind of the, the study as, of course, this was one small subset of our study. Most of it was focused on the terrible food system in Dolphin County and how to strengthen that. But we, we saw this data and thought we could present it to policymakers who likely have more sway on that front than...
And I couldn't help but mention when you showed the map of the areas, you talked about the city, you talked about Steelton High Spire. I also noticed a big swath in the northern end of the Dolphin County.
Yes, yeah.
Where was that specifically?
The Williamstown area, if I'm remembering correctly.
Okay, all right, thank you. Keep up the great work. We appreciate all you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming and presenting to us, and thanks for all the work that the Central PA Food Bank does. Obviously, you're doing work throughout the entire county, throughout the entire region. Like you said, I think a third of the state or more. So thank you for all that work that your organization does. When we talk about access to food, food deserts, I mean, for people not familiar, just want to make it clear that like, we're obviously talking about feeding people. We're talking about giving them access to food. But we're talking about also that impacts their health and development, especially of children. And then even beyond that, it impacts education. If you're hungry and you go to school, how, how well are you going to learn, right? It impacts opportunity and the type of, you know, opportunity that they're going to have as they come into adulthood. And so I think the impact that solving problems of food deserts can have on the region could be widespread. And I think, I think it's just important that people recognize this isn't just about having a grocery in your neighborhood for convenience. It, it can literally solve a lot of other social challenges that we're, that we're seeing in other forms in, in our county. And so with that, thank you for the work you did to put that together, because I think it helps us be informed about kind of the most pressing areas and the areas in, in which we can have the biggest impact if, if we're able to, to, you know, successfully get a grocery store to come into that region. Can I ask, have you met with Kredik or the Chamber to kind of talk to them about this opportunity and like kind of educate them on, on, on this? Because there's just a lot of business-minded leaders there who might be interested in trying to figure out how they could support something like this.
We have not yet, but we'd be happy to.
Yeah, let me know if there's, if I, if I can help open a door there. As I said, on Kredik, I would love to try to get you in front of some of those leaders to, to do this presentation, because I think, I think that would just be a good group, kind of the Chamber here to, to see the opportunity that's there, so.
Yeah, thank you for that.
But thank you again for being here. Any other questions or comments for my colleagues?
I also just want to add, our Controller, Mary Bateman routinely volunteers her time for food distribution in the Harrisburg areas. I want to thank her for what she does.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll just note, I added, there's a QR code to our Dolphin County Hunger Mapping Report, and it's, it's actually very towards the end for the, where we assess food deserts in Dolphin County. So you can find... so you can find it there. Very much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you, Zach. Next up, we have Brittany McCarthy from Connections Health Solutions for a presentation.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. All right. Whenever you're ready. To go to the next slide. Just hit this to go to the next slide.
Yes. Whenever you're done. But you're good.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate, obviously, the partnership between Cumberland Perry and Dauphin Counties to open this regional emergency behavioral health crisis walk-in center and your involvement and support in receiving that grant through the counties. Just a reminder that Connections' mission is providing immediate care to people in crisis and connecting them to long-term support within their community. So something really important to our mission and Connections as an agency is making sure that individuals can stay as close to home while receiving treatment. Just a reminder about our service lines at Connections. So we are physically located at eleven hundred South Cameron Street with a walk-in urgent care. All of our services are twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, no appointment needed, and no call ahead. So we have that walk-in urgent care with hopes to stabilize individuals in that urgent care as they're able to receive immediate behavioral health treatment with less than a ninety-minute wait time to see our team. If we're unable to stabilize the individual in our urgent care setting, we do move them into our crisis stabilization, which is our twenty-three-hour observation unit. These two levels of care have an intention of relieving pressure from the emergency rooms and diverting individuals from jail. There is that, there was this middle ground level of care that didn't exist in most communities that our founders pioneered and developed and realized that with just a little bit more time to stabilize individuals, we were able to keep them out of emergency rooms with long waits and taking up beds where individuals really needed medical care, but also keep people from leaving their communities to go to inpatient treatment, and they were able to be stabilized and connected to community supports within their area. So we have those two levels of care in addition to our transition services where we connect individuals to community-based resources to assist on their path to recovery, with also a mobile crisis response unit to operate twenty-four seven, three sixty-five with a licensed clinician and a person with lived experience to respond to crises that essentially may not require law enforcement intervention with the hope of keeping individuals in the community. So if we can treat maybe even some of the more rural areas or individuals that have , you know, transportation issues or difficult time leaving their home, the goal of that mobile response is to keep people at home while also evaluating and connecting to services. So we brought, I brought along some Dauphin County-specific data here. We do have a law enforcement entrance at our back door, which is, the purpose of that door is to encourage law enforcement to bring individuals to us instead of jail or the hospital with a very quick drop-off time of under ten minutes. So I just wanted to share some of the data that we brought along here. This would be since we have opened in December of twenty twenty-four to the end of April of twenty-five. So we've served over twelve hundred Dauphin County residents with a one hundred percent walk-in referral acceptance rate. We have a nineteen-minute mobile crisis response time. That's the average response time over the three counties. We have an average of one point six minute drop-off time at that back door for law enforcement. We have, like I said, a hundred percent acceptance rate. Our time from urgent care for youth ages fourteen to seventeen, from the time they come in the door to seeing our doc is forty-two minutes. Our adult time is forty-seven minutes, and that average length of stay on our observation unit is sixteen hours. To the right here, we have the law enforcement departments that have utilized our back door, like I said, through April, so these numbers have certainly increased. Our team, our county partners, and our law enforcement agencies have done a lot of work around encouraging law enforcement partnering with them, educating them on either utilizing our mobile team in partnership with treatment, but utilizing that back door entrance. We did just want to thank our nine-one-one partners. We've seen an increase over just the last couple weeks of dispatches to our mobile team, and it really has taken a lot of collaboration and partnership with a lot of different agencies to make this project successful, and we're extremely grateful for that. We have regular communication with our law enforcement partners, giving them department-specific data on how many drop-offs they have, in addition to working really closely with their co-responders. We have regular meetings with their co-responders and really daily interaction with them on cases and individuals that we're both, both of our teams are working with. So we've seen honestly great improvement in collaboration and partnership and are really able to serve Dauphin County effectively with everyone on board. So our partnerships do continue to grow. We've really, we've only been open for six months, and I feel like we've done a lot of work in that time. These are some of the directions in which our team is still going in regards to community outreach and awareness. So we'll be working on a youth marketing campaign to really educate the school districts and parents and families about what services are available for youth at Connections. We will have ongoing meetings with provider agencies and community groups. In addition to our hospital partners, we meet on a monthly basis with our local hospital systems to ensure seamless coordination if we need to transfer an individual from our center to the hospital for medical clearance, but ensuring that we get that individual back at our center to be able to continue behavioral health treatment and get them to their appropriate level of care. And then, of course, our law enforcement and first responder collaboration. We do have a pilot project that should be taking off here in the next couple weeks, which is really exciting. In Pennsylvania, EMS are not able to transport anywhere but to a hospital per their regulations. And so UPMC Life Team, who covers a decent area of Dauphin County, will be partnering with us in a pilot project to be able to transport individuals to Connections when appropriate. And so we can collect that data and show the importance of all emergency response teams being able to transport to the most appropriate facility, and that that may not always be the emergency room. Continuing to prioritize our communications, sending out our weekly or bi-weekly crisis activity report, and then I'm still doing briefings with all individual departments six AM and six PM some days to make sure that we reach everyone, answer any questions, clarify any confusions, and just continue to strengthen that partnership. And then here, we just, I won't go through this, but just, you know, we attached here one of our more recent patient satisfaction notes. This was actually handwritten by a patient about the patient's experience at Connections. And so we really do always appreciate that feedback from the individuals who are utilizing our services, good and bad, but this was a really a great thing to see when a patient writes something and says thank you for the services you provided us.
Good movies, too.
Yes, yes. So thank you so much for having me. I'm certainly open to take any questions you may have.
Just thank you for providing an updated statistics. I know there's been a lot of discussion about this twenty-four seven drop-in center, you know, coming to this region. First of all, I want to thank our partners from Cumberland and Perry Counties. This doesn't happen without a regional partnership. I think I said it this morning at the CIT discussion about intercept mapping, the idea of us doing this alone cannot happen with the current state of affairs and resources that are available. We really need to be thinking regionally as it relates to resolving and trying to be innovative with solving issues. I also said in that meeting this morning that the challenges are coming from above, but the solutions will be coming from the ground level with understanding our clients and patients. We just need partners that are willing to fund us. And I know the future funding of Connections is something that we have worked tirelessly on, both with trying to gain all available revenues and opportunities, figuring out ways to creatively ask managed care for areas that we felt were previously untouchable, and the persistence in attempting to try to find sustainability has really pushed us to new levels. But we will be asking every question, and, you know, the idea of what happens to the federal and state dollars, you know, again, we don't have as much control over even though we're lobbying, but but solutions like this need to show that we're reducing hospital stays, we're reducing folks in the emergency rooms, we're reducing the people that are referred to the prison. Those system-wide impacts are saving millions of dollars to be able to find innovative ways to triage and provide better outcomes in a front-end way rather than lingering folks who, quite frankly, should not be in prisons as the primary provider of mental health services who are not getting better. And it's not where we should be treating folks who are struggling with mental illness. So I think this is a testament to what can happen when we work together at the local level and to see that we still are advancing work for, you know, both intercepts, ways that we can partner with law enforcement, ways that we can come up with other ways to get people out of the system. The best mechanism to save money is to keep people out of the system altogether that are not a danger to this community. Mental health is not a crime, and for us to figure out ways to to try to keep folks out of our prison system at the front end by any creative mechanism, those partnerships, I think, is a worthwhile investment. So thank you for the report.
Again, I like those comments that say, great job that you and your team are doing. And George, I want to thank you for the leadership you showed in this topic over the last several years, putting this together, the three-county partnership that brought us to this day. And I think the remarkable number you kicked out was the one hundred percent acceptance rate. You can't get any better than that. So thank you, and I want to thank our law enforcement and other team members for making this happen. Thanks.
Brittany, thank you for coming and sharing with us this presentation. I think it's really important for the public to know. So just to be clear for the public, if they want to access this, can you give your address of where you're at if they're if they're experiencing, you know, a mental health crisis themselves or a family member's experiencing a mental health crisis and they want to, you know, come to your facility? Where's that facility located?
Sure. The facility is located at eleven hundred South Cameron Street, and you can access those services in person, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, no call ahead, no appointment needed. To access our mobile team, you would call nine eight eight, nine one one, or County Crisis. If there's no need for a law enforcement response, nine eight eight and County Crisis are safe way to go, and our team will respond.
Great. I just want to emphasize as someone who's really interested in jail reform, the impact that this can have on our prison. You know, our prison's one of the largest mental health care providers in the county as we have people there, you know, who, we've criminalized mental health care and, you know, people who are in mental health crisis, you know, need a compassionate health response as opposed to, you know, being criminalized in that moment. And our systems just haven't supported that. And I think, you know, Connections is a step toward creating a system where we can see support for people in the midst of a mental health crisis as opposed to criminalizing. So thank you for your work in that. And I think I just want to emphasize the impact that this has on jail diversion. So while it's having an impact on our county and individuals in our county, it's also going to have an impact on our prison and, you know, some of those individuals who, you know, correction officers sometimes have the most challenging experience with, because they are in a mental health crisis and they're not mental health, you know, providers. That's not what they're, that's not what they're trained in necessarily. You know, to be able to have professionals like you and others there, ready to receive those individuals and provide them the care they need, and ultimately, it could just be a bad moment, you know, and the ability for that to be de-escalated and them to be, you know, to re-assimilate to society, not having a criminal record, not having an experience of, you know, an outstanding criminal charge. That's a, that can have a massive impact on people's lives and their families. And so thank you for the work you're doing, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next up, Human Resources, Cassie Ruschinsky.
Today, the Salary Board and Personnel Packet have no items that need a vote today.
Do we have any questions regarding Personnel Packet? Any questions of Cassie? Hearing none. Thank you. Next up, Director of Budget and Finance, Christopher Davis.
Morning. I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was distributed this week.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Davis? I do have a question. I just, I just want to, I want to, for the public and just even for the Commissioners, can you speak to the challenge of getting budget actuals, given Oracle and some of the the new realities of just like, we were talking the other day and you had shared, you know, we have kind of two systems right now, and it can be challenging to get budget actuals. And not that we can't get them, it just takes a lot of hoops. Can you just talk about some of the challenges your your office is experiencing right now as we're working through a new operating system? I just, I want it to be.
Yeah, so certainly when we talk about Oracle, I think the best way to look at that is kind of similar to when we just talked about Microsoft, like Oracle is the bigger program, and then there's kind of software modules under that, under that similar to like Word, Excel outlook that will all talk to each other. But with Oracle, we have the financials module that has our actuals, it's where we pay our invoices, it's where the POs go in that tracks all that. Budget is a separate module that integrates, when done correctly, rather seamlessly, to keep all the data flowing between each other. So the budget would module, well, obviously, you build the budget over there, we report from it over there. It's its own standalone thing, we can do projections and other things, and it will push data back and forth between the financials. So the issue now is between, the big issue is between the integrations. So we have the, in this case, the twenty twenty-five budget in the budget module, we have the actuals in the financial module, and although they do talk to each other, not very well. So there's inaccuracies with the actuals and the budget module because the way the data's getting pulled. I just want to confirm that the actuals for the public in the financial module are accurate.
And basically, that just means you have to go through extra steps of like, checking to make sure everything accurately is talking to each other and edit manually. And I just, I just want that to be clear, only because these are just some of the continuing things we're working through with Oracle that, you know, we will need to fix in order for it to operate the way it wants to.
So essentially, to your point, if I want a budget to actuals report, I need to go run my budget report out of the budget module, and then I need to kindly ask the Controller's Office to run out a big export of all the actuals, and then I need to take two thousand line Excel spreadsheets and start moving numbers from one to the other. And it's not as easy as copy and paste because there might be charges in a line that didn't have a budget associated with it if we got a new grant and we couldn't put an amendment in yet. So it, it's very time-consuming.
Well, I just want to thank you for your work on that, but just wanted that to be known for the public. So thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Davis? All right, thanks. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggard.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are only two items on today's agenda requiring board action, a tourism grant for the Pride Festival of Central PA and a tourism grant for the Greater Harrisburg area and AACP. I do have a few additional things to share today, though. I want to first congratulate our Department of Public Safety for recent recognition they received from the United States Secret Service for support they provided throughout the twenty twenty-four general election with regular, high-profile visits to the area from nationally recognized figures that just requires a ton of complicated planning for public safety, and Secret Service recently presented them with a plaque in recognition of all of their outstanding work. So congratulations and thank you to them. I also want to congratulate ten new officers who graduated from our Basic Training Academy last week. We're grateful for their service, as well as congratulations in order for fifteen folks who are incarcerated at the prison for completing their high school education, which is, of course, a really important milestone in life that they should be extremely proud of. I also want to remind everyone that our Department of Parks and Recreation is hosting Proudly PA at Fort Hunter Park this weekend. This is a celebration of everything that makes the Keystone State great. There will be lots of excellent PA-made beer, wine, spirits, as well as some of the best food trucks in the region, so I hope folks take time to check it out this weekend. And lastly, our very own Deputy Chief Clerk, Vince Peace, has a birthday this Friday. So Vince, if you could come up to the front, the Commissioners are going to sing happy birthday to you. birthday to you. Just kidding.
That's the most nervous I've seen.
Getting, getting to know and work with Vince has been one of the best parts of taking on this job over the last several months. So Vince, happy 50th birthday. You look, you look great. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Haggard? Hearing none, Solicitor's report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Tough to follow that report and I will do so by saying I have nothing to report.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none. We have a training packet that requires approval. We have one item.
I make a motion to approve the one item on today's training pack.
Commissioner Hartwick with the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Priest with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have matters requiring board action. We have two matters today. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve items one and two on today's agenda.
Second.
For items one and two from Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Former business. Oh, sorry, is, is there any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Former business. We have none. Commissioners comments, Commissioner Hartwick.
Just the, the first thing I'd like to mention is we lost three giants from this community in the past week. Ms. Cindy Watkins, who has been a friend of mine for over 40 years, who worked in the office next to my mom at the state Capitol, who has been a person who's had one of the biggest hearts of anybody I know, who's been an advocate for criminal justice reform long before it was popular and who's had a heart for this community in a way that was demonstrated through her daily action. Cindy never told you what you wanted to hear, she told you what you needed to hear. And she was somebody who I know from her heart did everything within her daily power to be able to make this community a better place and she will be missed. We also lost a giant in Homer Floyd this week, somebody who served as the Human Relations Commission Chair for over 30 years and has been a stalwart member of this community that set examples in providing fairness and the idea of equal rights and advancing the interests of all people in this community was his goal and he didn't talk about it. He put himself in a position to actually make sure that those seats were at every table and he was an advocate for the NAACP and all human rights for as long as I've known Mr. Floyd. So a, a true giant. And also on a personal note, I know Brian Hudson's mom, Mary, passed away this week as well. So I think acknowledging all three passings, something that I, I prefer to start out with something of a good acknowledgement, although the stories of each one of these individuals in this community is one of greatness. We lost angels this week. Also just wanted to talk about, actually, we had the meetings on Capitol Hill this week, we talked about them last week. We met with House and Senate leadership, we met with majority and minority appropriations chairs in both the House and Senate and met with the Philadelphia Caucus Chair as well as several other key folks in decision-making capacity related to the mental health budget requests. Our request was 100 million. The governor's proposed 20 million. We asked for 80 million above that, which was reduced from the previous year. But the response from each one of the offices was it is a complicated year where, you know, budget uncertainty exists and there is, you know, limited ability to make commitments. However, if you do not ask and we are not providing a level of priority, we will certainly not be considered for, for that request. I said it earlier, the mental health vice budget and mental health system is probably the most underfunded system in all of county government. It is past the point of being a safety net, it's broken. This county will have to make cuts next year if absent, if, if we do not have the ability to have new revenue from our county-based funds perspective. And sometimes I wonder what kind of pain needs to occur in this system in order for folks to pay attention? Is it a catastrophe? I mean, there's catastrophes, things that happen every day, suicides that happen every day, lack of access to help. I think the one thing I realize and recognize as a county commissioner is we try to figure out a way to triage and fix things. We don't want to see a catastrophe occur. We want to see people served in the best way and with the resources that we have. And sometimes absent a catastrophic event, I'm asking what it is that we're going to need to have for the legislature to pay attention to the need for adequately funding our behavioral health system. Again, we're taking action. I know we've taken action on Monday. We will continue to beat this drum and we want to avoid any catastrophic issues from occurring as we make real progress on the ground level. We need a partner for funding and we need the ability to fill the gaps. If that does not occur and if the governor's budget goes through without these increases, we will be making cuts in Dolphin County next year in behavioral health services and it will provide even more limited access to those people who are struggling and in current. So I just wanted to let those folks know that, and provide a report from this week. So we were well received but given no commitments, but the, we, we need all of your help to be able to advocate for these particular causes, particularly for the mental health. That's all.
Thank you, George. Want to follow up what our Chief of Staff said about the Proudly PA event happening this weekend at our Parks and Rec. And I'm also going to take advantage of the fact that we still have six more months to brag about the fact that our Dolphin County Parks Department was the number one parks department in the state of Pennsylvania last year, which is something to be very, very proud of under the leadership of Anthea Stebbins and her team. They had 900,000 visitors attend our parks each year. So folks are coming here to Dolphin County to see what wonderful parks we have. Another topic's been brought to my attention recently via emails from some residents and that is the Dolphin Highlands Golf Course and potential sale. And I think we need to start putting the message out there a little more about what our, what our role is or our, what our role isn't in the Dolphin Highlands Golf Course and projected sale. The Dolphin County General Authority issued an RFP earlier this year and they received six proposals to date. All offers are good for 120 days from May 18th. It'll take weeks if not months to determine whether or not any of those proposals are worthy of further discussion. The authority has been as open with the public as the law provides and will continue to report as they can. The General Authority is independent of the county and the sale of the golf course has nothing to do with county business or county fiscal affairs. The three commissioners do not have a vote on the determination of what the future of Dolphin Highlands Golf Course will be. And I want to, I want to stress that because a lot of emails I'm getting from the public is why are you commissioners looking to sell the Dolphin Highlands Golf Course? That is not something that we are looking to do, that's something the General Authority is looking at. Doesn't mean they're going to do it, but they are looking for proposals. And that was an update that I thought was something we should put out there. So thank you.
Commissioner Priest? Just want to acknowledge Pride Month and say happy pride to obviously the entire county, but certainly our employees. Today at 12:30, we'll be having a press conference, Pride Press Conference out front of the Dolphin County Admin Building. You're certainly welcome to join, the public's welcome to be there. Just highlighting inclusion, we'll also be recognizing all their health services for their commitment to equitable and inclusive healthcare. So just wanted to put that on everyone's radar. We have public participation now, just a reminder, it's three minutes and we are being live streamed. So anyone for public participation, I might have a, do I have a list that? If there's no one on the list, I can just open to the room. Okay. We'll begin with Antonio Foster and Pamela Parsons will be on deck.
Morning, sir. Good on you.
Excuse me, sir. Could you please state your name?
Antonio Foster, 594 Chambers Street. I'm here to show that Kenyatta Henry and I want to say Officer Darren Bates. Together they, you know, they got together and I'm showing that I've been targeted on My daughter was kicked in and so was Kenyatta Henry. His daughter was kicked in, it was for telecommunication devices for Michael Baltimore. I was taken down to the police station. I was very adamant about not knowing or being affiliated with Mike Baltimore. And this is something that I think they knew because for the DEA, ATF, for all these different agencies to be chasing him, the only one that questioned me is Darren Bates. That's the only officer I ever been questioned by. And I was very adamant about, about not knowing Michael Baltimore. Now, Kenyatta Henry was charged with two and a half pounds of marijuana and a gun. For some reason, his gun disappeared. Nine months later, they took the charges off him and put it on me for the two and a half pounds of marijuana. I don't even know how they did that. Now, going along, this was the 27th of March in 2024, I was subpoenaed again to a grand jury indictment for Michael Baltimore. I would like maybe for you to go see, anybody go see if the interviews is public because in booking center you have a camera at a grand jury indictment, it will be public. I was adamant, they never asked me not one question about Michael Baltimore. Now, my issue with that is it was pictures taken at that grand jury indictment of me. And they were passed around the streets of Harrisburg to make it seem like I was telling law Michael Baltimore. And I didn't care about it because I didn't care about the streets. I only cared when I was approached. When I was approached with it and, you know, my violence can come to me because I'm a man, I'm going to have to protect myself. The help that I got, I want to say my angel was Chanel Baltimore because that's Michael Baltimore's sister and she kind of cleared it up for me, making it known that I wasn't a part of that. But the only way I could be subpoenaed was by the police. I would like those interviews, I don't care if you make them public, are you quiet, are you go look at them yourself? But there's no reason why these charges that I have on me now shouldn't even be on me. Not only that, the evidence has already been destroyed. So how am I charged with evidence that's, that has already been destroyed? The animal is my representation, she has all of that, I also have it right here. But just in case, I, I got my own paperwork, just in case, I can't trust these people, just in case they try to switch it up. Thank you. Thank you.
If, if I may ask, sir, this is I believe the third time you've come here before us and, no, I'm just, I'm just asking a question. It's been brought up about a, a grand jury indictment, photos, pictures taken at a grand jury. Are, are these, are these topics we're allowed to be discussing here in public? And the reason I'm asking for you as well is when you say you're going to bring it out in public, it is in public because.
I'm okay with that, I'm already there. That's what I'm saying, that's my point.
Understood.
Can I ask, this is, this is very, very public. Is, is your representation a public defender?
Yes, she's the animal mother, so all this information.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next we have Pamela Parsons on deck, Jean Stulp.
He's trying to get this on the record.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Haggard and Mr. Owens. Pam Parsons, City of Harrisburg. Last week when we were talking about budgets and some other things, I talked about the fact that behind all these numbers are people. So I wanted to share with you a story today about a person that I know, whom I'll call Sawyer. Sawyer is an adult living alone, no family nearby, works full-time, is kind, generous, took care of family when they were struck by illness. They help people in the communities, help countless people move, take people to work, pick people up, is a church member for those of you for whom that's important. Sometimes Sawyer has a car, sometimes not and relies on a bicycle. Sawyer has difficulty finding an affordable place to live and has sometimes been in some sort of shaky deals in living situations, like I'll be a caregiver for, in exchange for a place to live. Sawyer has never owned a house and probably never will. As I mentioned, Sawyer works full-time, has been in the same place for the same employer for decades and makes well under $15 an hour. There have been times when Sawyer has worked a second job to make ends meet. They've accepted a transfer, multiple transfers within the company. They seldom miss work, they often cover for others and sometimes work extra hours. And it could be argued that Sawyer just ought to find a better job. But Sawyer is lawyer, loyal, because they see the work they do as providing a service. And Sawyer would probably be eligible for SNAP benefits, but chooses not to, to apply, but knows that there are other people who work for the same employer who do get them. Sawyer works for the Dolphin County Library System and has been there for decades. And I'm telling you this story in juxtaposition to the fact that we paid Mr. Musser, or Mr. Musser had a contract for tens of thousands of dollars. But this is the kind of person who makes a difference for the people in Dolphin County. Thank you.
Jean Stulp, now I'll open it to the floor.
Jean Stulp, 1550 Fish Green Valley Road, Harrisburg. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
It doesn't take long to realize that moral questions present themselves to us every day. While others may not notice the moral questions, if you perceive something as a moral question, then ignoring it begins the process of internal suppression of the question. Time can go by and those who ignore the moral questions in life are diminished by their avoidance of task dealing with the moral questions. I submit to you, as you sit here as community leaders, as you sit here as judges, what is good and what is not good for the overall community, I submit that the question of the restart of Three Mile Island, the no restart of Three Mile Island, in the end is a moral question. You sit in those seats and like those in surrounding counties are faced with moral questions, a question that will have impact for decades and future generations to come. Usually your questions are about dollars and cents and economic impact, like should a county acquire a certain building, a question you are facing right now. You have to weigh everything especially in light of the recent record of past county leadership. As certain decisions of leadership go beyond the economic impacts and cross into the morality of that decision, I submit, I submit that TMI was never looked at in the light of morality in the past by the county government leaders. Morality of operation was not a question for county leaders to deal with. However, however there, excuse me, however, there has been time to reflect, facts are being laid before, before folks in positions of leadership like yourselves, that have to take a broader, a broader overview of the future that includes the morality of certain decisions. The legacy of TMI has a number of significant moral questions. If TMI never reopens and its legacy already, its legacy already plagues the present generation, will have a significant impact on the future. The moral question about the highly, about the most highly poisonous waste that is already there, is being left there for future generations, I submit, is a moral question that no constellation Energy Boardroom will ever take into consideration. The concept of Dolphin County and the surrounding counties as sacrifice counties because of this waste is a reality that must be morally addressed at this time. One moral question is, will you increase this, this sacrifice, this, this as a sacrifice county by letting 700 tons of highly poisonous waste be added to by another 35, another 350 tons of nuclear waste by reopening the plant? It is a question of responsible leadership, I submit, in the end is a moral question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now open it to the floor, anyone for public comment? See, nobody, I'll entertain, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. We are adjourned. Special.